Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, and this is the Salinas City Council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda.
Thank you. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember McShane, would you lead us? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember González?
Present.
Councilmember McShane?
Here.
Councilmember Osornio?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. And I am going to move an item around on the agenda. We were running a bit late, and so I want to give public comment, the opportunity to begin this meeting. We'll go to proclamations and commendations second after that. If you wish to make a general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, you're encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Email public comments received have been distributed to the council and will be entered into the record. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. We're now open for public comment on items that are not on today's agenda but are in the city of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on agenda items should be held until the items are reached. We're now open. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Kimberly Bryant. First of all, I'd like to say God bless you, Steve, and thank you so much for your service. I would like to offer a prayer to the city council and those of the people in the room, and I'd ask you to please join me if you would like. It is the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. I'd just like to say the Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
My name is Bill Freeman. I've known Steve McShane since we were trustees when he got elected in 2003, almost 21 years ago. To quote the late Senator Bobby Kennedy, "Some men see things as they are and ask why. I see things as they never were and ask why not." What Steve McShane has done for our city over the last 14 years is completely phenomenal. Every time I went to an event, every time I went to an event here in the city of Salinas, I saw Councilman Steve McShane at every event. It didn't matter what event it was. And you've left my hometown of Salinas, your hometown of Salinas, Steve, better than you found it. And that's what any public servant on any level should do. Make it better for everyone that resides in the city of Salinas, and you've done that, and you've done a good job of that. I may not have agreed with you 21 years ago at Hartnell College, but you never treated me badly like the other people did. And his parties were legendary. I won't go into great detail, but it was before he was married, at his house. And most of the time, I won't say anything about that, but they were great parties. You're a great friend, a great public servant for our city of Salinas, and you'll be missed. Thank you, Steve, for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Rose Clark, for those of you that don't know me, but I want to make sure that I have to come here and say thank you, Steve, from the bottom of my heart, from my family, for the district, but most of all, from all of Salinas. Because like everybody a little while ago echoed, was that he wasn't a council member for District 3. He was a council member for every single district in Salinas. He really cared. He wanted the best for our city. He wanted us to shine. No matter what city you saw, Steve, in, the proudest moment was when he uttered the word "Salinas." Thank you, Steve, from the bottom of my heart. You will be very much missed, and you have some great big shoes to fill by somebody who's going to sit there. And my God bless that person and everybody else in this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, and Councilmember Steve McShane in particular. I'm here to present to you a certificate of recognition from the Monterey County Association of Realtors. Councilman Steve McShane has diligently represented the city of Salinas District 3 residents for 14 years. Under McShane's leadership, residents and businesses of South Salinas and downtown had unprecedented opportunities to engage with him and be heard by their city government. McShane's facilitation of community dialogues exemplified what every community would wish for in a city council representative. So, thank you, Steve, and as others have said, whoever fills your shoes better be prepared to be at every single meeting, answer every single phone call and text message, because that's what your constituents have come to expect. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name's Gemma Daly, and I just want to thank you, Steve, and for what you've done here, but also, when you engage with someone, you make them feel like they're the only person that's important. That's a unique gift that you have, and I just thank you. Thank you. I think the event before is just the tip of the iceberg of the appreciation that the city has for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, David Mack, District 3. Steve, I'm here to thank you as a friend, as a neighbor, and as the vice president of the great neighborhood association you founded, Los Alamos Riker Neighborhood. We thank you for your dedication, your service for 14 years, and personally, welcome back to the neighborhood. Steve, I can't wait to see you running around with those kids and that great wife and having a beer in the fire pit in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name is Olga Reyna. I'm with Building Healthy Communities, and I have some people here, some of my fellow coworkers that are here to represent the renters, and we have CCCA with us. So, we've been working on the streets with this online survey regarding the stabilization of rent control and the protection of renters. We do have some people that have commented on what the needs are for the renters in this ordinance, and we have 624 petitions that have been filled out with their comments. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes a todos. Al señor McShane, les deseo éxito en cualquier camino que tome o cualquier decisión que tome. Les deseo mucho éxito. Hoy estamos acompañando a nuestra compañera, a Olga, para entregar las firmas que se ha recortado, y estamos aquí nuevamente para recordarles que seguimos pendiente la reunión el 25 de junio. Así que estamos aquí, ojalá se pueda hacer una votación a favor. Gracias.
Good afternoon to everyone. Councilman McShane, I wish you success in any path you take. I wish you have a lot of success. And I'm here with my peer, Olga, helping her to deliver all these signatures that we have been gathering. And I'm here again reminding you that may be on the meeting on June 25th. Hopefully, we can submit this to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm also here with CCCA and BHC, and I would like to suggest that we have a time set for the housing agenda, just because a lot of the people who are impacted by this housing agenda do work, and they don't get out until later in the day, and having them here at a certain time is going to be very difficult for them if they don't know the hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Mayor and city council members. I met Steve in 2010, I believe, and he has helped me with the rose garden at Central Park, our unit, Salinas Unit 31. It had been, they had started it in 1944. There's 57 roses that were there for the veterans of World War II that were killed in action in the Monterey County area. And Steve was the one that they told me to reach out to, because I had Dave Norstrom write an article, because I had run across it, and I was born here, so I'm familiar with it. But years passed, and I didn't realize that it was started by our unit. So, when I saw that in the newspaper, we just said that it had been forgotten. Well, now, it's been revived. Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate everything that you have done, and he's helped me also with the memorial bench that's out there, and it has the 11 members that were killed in action in Afghanistan, in Iraq, in, I'm sorry, it's just going through my head. But anyway, we do have their names there on the bench, so to that, I would like to say thank you again. I don't know what I'm going to do without you, but congratulations on retiring.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Anna Ramirez. Thank you all for your service. Thank you, Steve. I'm here because I'm living proof of my daughter playing soccer, sports, and this is for the Montevilla. I mean, if my daughter plays sports and I'm bringing her, because, I mean, look at her. She's, you know, a teenager. I would like the park to be open for them. I mean, not just the, I just, I'm not just a parent here, I'm also a soccer coach. I also work for an education area, so I'm here to support for all, you know, our youngsters in, you know, just in the sports and everything. So, please, I need your help, you know, when it comes to the Montevilla, for it to be open for all the sports, you know, for all the youngsters to play. I mean, I really appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sí, también.
Hi, welcome.
Mi nombre es Ana León, y pues, verdad, aquí estoy por dos razones, senior, y por el soccer. Mi preocupación ahorita en los jóvenes es que ellos están haciendo, se están agrupando en diferentes áreas que no es la correcta, ¿verdad? Ya ve que estamos ahorita perdiendo muchos jóvenes por tocante a todas las drogas que hay afuera, y mi preocupación es que yo quisiera, ¿verdad?, que apoyaran a nuestros jóvenes, ¿verdad?, que sea el futuro del mañana, para con canchas de soccer, porque están batallando mucho, mucho, mucho. Y orgullosa por mi nieta y por mis nietos, que les gusta el deporte, y pues venemos a pedirles, por favor, que también tomen consideración de que nuestros jóvenes necesitan canchas para que ellos sigan adelante. Eso es. Muchas gracias. Y también parte senior, también soy senior, también voy a los seniors, y también por eso también estoy aquí.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna León, and I'm here for two reasons. One is for the seniors, and the other is for soccer. I am here because our youth, they need to be able to get, you know, gather together in a healthy way, and sadly, sometimes our youth gather, and they are getting into things that are not good or healthy, like drugs. So, that worries me. So, I'm here to support the youth. They're our future, so we need more soccer fields. We need to help them a lot, so they have places where they can play. I'm very proud of my granddaughter and all my other grandchildren, because they play sports, they like sports. We should support that, and I'm also here to support the seniors.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Effren Ruano. I'm a volunteer coach with the Monterey County Soccer League. I too have a nine and 10-year-old U-10 soccer team coed, boys and girls. You know, it is a great, it's a great feeling to be able to give back to them, to keep them off the streets, just like everyone is mentioning. You know, unfortunately, we do, there is a bad rap around public parks here in Salinas. It's, unfortunately, we have a lot of, how would you say, alcohol abuse and whatnot out in the parks, and it's getting to be confused to our organization. We have nothing to do with those activities out there. In fact, we actually were against it, because it's going to give the kids a wrong idea. Like I said, I know we have to find a common ground where everyone can, we can coexist. I mean, like everyone is mentioning, we do have a lack of sports grounds. I mean, we do have a complex coming up, but that's here in the near future. And I just wanted to come out and just give you guys a different point of view. Like I said, I do have, we do have a bunch of different ages, from teenagers down to six, seven-year-olds, and we do it for the kids, we do it for the community. We want to give back, we want to keep the kids off of the street. I mean, personally, in my case, unfortunately, I had made a few bad mistakes in my life, and here I am trying to give back and make amends, and I just hope that we can come to an agreement, and I just want to thank you all for your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, Joel Panzer tonight on behalf of the Salinas Valley Food and Wine Festival. At the earlier ceremony for Councilmember McShane, the mayor had talked about a number of the initiatives that Steve has had during his tenure here with the city, and one of them is our Salinas Valley Food and Wine Festival going on our 13th year. Six years ago, Steve came into my office with Frank Savito and said, hey, look, you know, we need somebody to chair the event this year, and six years later, we're still at it. So, I just wanted to read an email that I got from the Monterey Herald yesterday. It says, "Congratulations, great news. The Salinas Valley Food and Wine Festival was recognized as a winner in our recent Salinas Valley Readers' Choice Awards. Second place for favorite local event. Tickets went on sale two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, April 15th, we've sold 300. We've sold out for the last three years." There's Steve's legacy.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Peter Zaline, North Salinas. According to the city's booklet, Guidelines for a Better Salinas, residential ordinances protect and preserve the basic character and quality of life in residential neighborhoods, ensuring that properties are maintained and are consistent with the design standards of a neighborhood. Sounds great. The problem is that our code enforcement approach is reactive, choosing to only respond to complaints as received. In other words, the city does not provide proactive enforcement. It does not go out into neighborhoods to actively monitor and compel compliance. The obvious drawback to a squeaky wheel approach is that there is an uneven distribution of citizens who know how and are willing to contact the city for services. Waiting for and responding to complaints means that the city provides arbitrary code enforcement, and depending on any clustering of complainants, this might even stink of favoritism. Some neighborhoods and districts receive a lot of code enforcement, some very little or none at all, with obvious violations continuing for months or years. That's wrong. Instead, the city should ensure that all districts receive an equitable distribution of enforcement services and not solely rely on who happens to submit a complaint. Code enforcement officers should routinely canvass each district, looking for obvious violations to either cite or warn. Examples include oversized vehicles, vehicles parked on lawns, inoperable vehicles not in a garage or carport, vehicles parked over sidewalks, and general blight. No one wants to live in a neighborhood in marked decline due to ordinances not followed and not enforced. In reality, ordinances not enforced mean there are no ordinances. I urge the city council to direct code enforcement to adopt a proactive service model. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
The Montevilla community supports soccer, and our advice to parents that are concerned with their child's ability to use those facilities is to encourage your league to bring in the porta potties, so you're not peeing on the lawns of our neighborhood. And I'm not trying to be rude, but when you do have a community of people that will come and surprise grandma with more than she's expecting to see when she picks her roses, then there is some accountability there. So, be accountable for yourself, be accountable for your children, work with the league to get the porta potties, and to understand the complaints of the community, so we can be 100% supportive of keeping these kids off the street. I believe they deserve everything in a way that's not destructive to my community. I found this word, and the word is reverse discrimination. I was sleeping, and then I woke, and I dreamed of a word, and I looked it up. Reverse discrimination is a term used to describe discrimination against members of a dominant or majority group in favor of members of a minority or historically disadvantaged group. It is still discrimination, and it is still illegal, I believe. Another term for this reverse discrimination is reverse racism. And in a community where we're concerned about discrimination and racism, and we fight for the rights of all, I want to make sure that we're inclusive in terms of who it is that we protect from discrimination, right? Because you guys are, I won't even say it, right? Because you know what it is, and I don't want to offend anybody. I just want you to know what the word is, that it's a real word, and it's a real thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Welcome, Jorge Rojas, president of Monterey County Soccer Club. Happy retirement, Steve. Honorable mayor, city council members, and city staff. A reason why I'm coming back here again is because there's further complaints about, first, it was because we had adults playing on the Montevilla fields, which I came in and I explained it was only youth, and these are youth, district children. Second, now, we're getting complaints that it's, I'm distributing keys to all the coaches when the keys that I have, in fact, it says, do not duplicate. So, it's impossible to duplicate and give every coach a key to get in the facility. Two, there was a request that we put a porta potty. We put a porta potty, but there is no validation as to whether it's our kids or people that are using the park, because there are people that do use those facilities, have picnics, and having to join on the Sundays. So, it's kind of hard to say, you know, it's a soccer group that's urinating in the grass, it's a soccer group that's drinking alcohol in parking lots. These are just hearsay allegations. So, what I want to do is I want to work with the group. I mean, I've been hearing it all the time, coming and complaining. We met, we're going to have a meeting on May the 20th, and this school, Montevilla, is a safe haven for kids. We're out there to protect, make sure that no one enters that's drinking, and I also don't want, you know, individuals to come and videotaping our kids and our families and getting in their faces, and that's create a hostile environment, and we want to avoid that. So, the reason I did not want the full house here, because we're the largest soccer organization locally and in Northern California with the 10,000-plus membership, so that's over 400 teams. And so, we do not want to play these tactics anymore as a tug-of-war of who's doing what or who's doing what. I just want all of us to work together and come up with an amicable plan and hash this out and make something best of it. I mean, there's the park at Cesar Chavez that's been closed off for some time. I've asked if we could use that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, welcome again, Jose Guerra, Montevilla Community. The gentleman we just talked to, Mr. Rojas, we had a meeting with him, with Mr. Abasi, and talk about, we tried to help him to develop a strategy to avoid this conflict that we're having, but he won't empower anybody to help him. They want to put up the portables, they want to have people supervise the area. That is the problem we're having. We don't care if they play soccer. Have enough people to supervise and make sure people don't drink and pick up their garbage, and having vendors without licenses there, okay? And I come here every two weeks to let you know about that, because I care about my community. I pay my taxes there. I don't mind if a kid plays there. Teach your adult children or elder people that go to pick up after themselves, to not drink, to not take a leak in the park, do not show their goodies to anybody else they have to. That's all we're asking for. So, it's not something like I'm beating my head against the wall. I talked to Mr. Pia, I've talked to Christian Lindquist, I've talked to everybody. Tony knows, but nobody wants to help. So, we need to have some kind of order here. We need to get everybody in the same room, so all the finger pointing stops, people can actually be accountable for their actions. That's what we really need. And again, our Skornberg area again had another accident. In case you guys didn't know, two cars went over, I believe on the 6th May, on Tuesday, two cars went over the edge again, so we got to get code enforcement down there to put something down there, or some lighting or something. So, other than that, I mean, come on, guys, you're all, you're public servants, you're paid now, so do your job, you know? Do something. Help us. Thank you very much. And Mr. Rojas, my door is always open for you, sir. Whenever you want to come and talk to me, and you want to get a strategy, like we tried with Malcolm and Mr. Ravago and Mr. Abasi, you didn't want to listen to us, so thank
Address the council.
you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Hello. Laura Kirchner and Susan Marcellus from Monterey County Works, representing Monterey County Workforce Development Board. Congratulations, Steve. We wanted to be sure and invite you all to our youth job fair taking place at the Northridge Mall tomorrow here in Salinas. Two sessions, 11 to 2:30, and then again from 4 to 6 p.m. You're all invited to join us, as is the audience. We have some flyers here for you, designed for youth 16 years old who are looking for their very first jobs, will be from 11 to 2:30, and then 4 to 6 is for the older kids, 18 and above. We want to thank the Salinas Union High School District, as well as Mission Trails ROP and the Northridge Mall for partnering with us.
So, we're trying to do something good for the community and try to help those kids get their first job. So, we're really happy that some businesses in Salinas stepped up, and they're hopefully going to hire some of our youth. And remember, your first job when you were 16, so hopefully, we're going to get those kids some jobs when they're 16. So, we're excited about tomorrow, and we're excited to share this information with you. So, thanks for the time that you gave us today, and again, thanks for your service, Steve. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll send some flyers. I'd like to get passes to the clerk to share with you guys. Thanks. Thank you. All right, last call for public comment in the chambers. If not, I will go to Zoom to see if there's anybody on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment. Looks like we have four, and I will go ahead and take the first one. Daniel Orta, you have two minutes. You may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, everyone. This is truly an honor to be able to address the city council and the members of the community at Salinas. Excuse me. So, my name is Daniel Orta. I'm an engineering student and computer science major at Hartnell College. I've also been a sports official for baseball and football at a number of areas across California since 2009. So, a lot of what the comments I've heard earlier about having accessibility for sports, that's a very important thing, and I think it teaches the value of teamwork early on for our future in young children. Plus, it's really fun. It's positive, productive ways to engage with their peers and to grow as people in a healthy way. So, secondly, I want to thank Steve and the council for supporting the programs that support students from Greenfield and Solid Ed communities to participate in transferable degree programs in STEM and theater arts, because as you must note, Salinas is pretty far away, and having these recent constructions in Solid Ed and King City Improvements, these are just great. These are imperative. Plus, the additional hybrid options for community members to participate, it's opened up many doors. For me myself, I participated in NASA Community College Aerospace Scholar Program, which is absolutely phenomenal exposure for professionalism. And by increasing opportunities for the community to gain these very important skills, it's imperative for increasing the quality of life for all residents by opening these doors. I want to emphasize the importance of tolerance, sports opportunities, and degree earning programs that remain available for our residents. I've been a centrist and technologist, and for the last three years, I've engaged with the Chamber of Commerce, served as a student leader at the Hartnell Student Senate, the President's Task Force on Racial Equity, and a delegate and regional vice chair for the
Thank you. Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next one. Sorry about that. Victor Tafoya, you have two minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the Salinas City Council. My name is Victor Manuel Tafoya, and I was one of the recipients of last year's Neighborhood Beautification Project. I'd like to provide you I'd like to provide you with an update on our Neighborhood Beautification Project. Over the past few months, our team diligently worked on transforming the residential landscape along portions of Longfellow Drive and the public right of way into a low maintenance, water conserving, sustainable environment. We successfully completed the project within the designated timeline and the budget. The new landscape features drought resistant plants and has enhanced the aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood while promoting environmental sustainability. Throughout the project, we collaborated closely with our local contractor and engaged the community in the planning and the execution phases. We received overwhelming support from our neighborhoods, demonstrating a shared commitment to improving our community. I'm proud to report that the project has not only beautified our neighborhood, but also contributed to water conserving efforts and promoted community involvement. Thank you for your continued support of initiatives aimed at enhancing our city's neighborhood and sustainability efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go on to Robin. Robin, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to speak about Measure G, which we passed in 2014. It's been brought to my attention that we don't have appropriate software that tracks the expenditures for that measure. Mr. Pia was asking for a survey, I believe that survey was going to cost us $54,000. And yet, when residents ask where all that funding has gone, it appears as though it's of indifference to this council to be able to provide us with that information. Our roads and our sidewalks desperately need to be repaired. Mr. Pia, you said that you were available to answer my questions, you said that I haven't given you the opportunity, you've chosen not to correspond via email, you've chosen not to ask for a phone call, and quite candidly, there seems to be no oversight by this council for you because your reimbursements, sir, between 2017 and 2024 were over $28,000. Now, it does appear as though those were for legitimate educational purposes, but you've been our Assistant City Manager for decades. Moreover, you have an Ivy League degree and yet you have not seen the need to put in appropriate software to track where our funds are going. And by the way, sir, how are you going to make up that $20 million deficit? None of you really seem to be concerned when members come to you of our city and say, hey, we're concerned that we don't have enough police. You seem indifferent to that. And then people show up and you choose not to address their questions or you want us to show up in person for a two to one meeting or a three to one meeting. When do you start taking accountability?
Thank you. We'll go on to RAD IV Orta or RAD IV Orta.
Thank you, Chair. My name is David Orta. I am a student also at Hartnell Community College located right here in Salinas. As a committed member of our community and someone who directly experiences.
Mr. Orta, we already had you in public comment, you only get one bite at the apple, so I apologize, but we're going to need to cut your second round short. Thank you.
That's someone else, ma'am. That's not me. That was Daniel Orta, that's my brother.
Oh, Daniel and David, oh, my bad. I apologize. Then we'll reset the clock. Thank you, I had whispers on both ends, so apologies on that end. We'll go ahead and start, I'm talking during his public comment, so let's start it over at two minutes. And David, I apologize, thank you.
No worries, thank you, Chair. Yes, to clarify, my name is David Orta. I am the twin brother of my brother Daniel Orta and I'm a student at Hartnell College located here in Salinas. I'm definitely somebody who's committed to our community and someone who's also experienced the challenges and opportunities facing our student population. I'm very invested in improving the conditions for all of our students. Additionally, I was elected as the Regional Affairs Director for Region Four of the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, which is RAD IV. I represent students from 11 colleges, including Hartnell, and this position has enabled me to tackle critical issues such as ensuring student basic needs, combating housing insecurity and increasing internship accessibility, particularly for our students in South Monterey County. I'm very proud to share that last week, Region Four organized a panel of discussions featuring students from Monterey Peninsula College, Foothill College, Hartnell College and beyond. We discussed important things as professional guidelines and communicating through community agreements in anti-racism. However, I wanted to mention that my tenure was, it's revealed significant organizational challenges that threaten our mission to foster student equity access and success at the SSC. And we've encountered serious issues of bullying, misconduct, exploitation, particularly highlighted by the actions of our Executive Director Julie Adams and her leadership approach and her salary of $180,000 per year compared to the modest $300 per month stipends for student board members have raised major concerns. And so a lot of students have left feeling manipulated and bullied out of participating in strategic decision-making processes. And so I'm here today to share these experiences and insights and how to explore how we can collaborate and address challenges in a more supportive and inclusive environment. So thank you so much for allowing me to be here and I look forward to seeing how things shake out here because this is my first time at this meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll try to get David and Daniel right in the future, so I don't know if you're identical or fraternal, but boy, you two sound alike, so. Thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Appreciate both the public and the council's understanding of moving the agenda around a bit. I'll go on to proclamations and commendations. And we have the Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2024, and I think we have Larry Hira Hari here perhaps? And I have Councilmember Osorio giving the proclamation.
Yes, and I welcome, I see a couple of members of ACE here in the audience, so thank you for being here. Whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a month to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions of Asian and Pacific Americans towards American history, society and culture. Whereas the United States Congress in 1977 designated one week in May for such observance, followed by an expanded time period to include the whole month in 1992. And whereas in 2021, a presidential proclamation expanded this observance to include Native Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders comprise many ethnicities and languages and their many achievements are prevalent in society. Whereas these individuals are leaders in all aspects of American life, government and industry, science and medicine, education and sports and armed forces. Whereas the City of Salinas joins in celebration of the Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders and their contributions towards cultural richness, diversity and generosity. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Kimberly Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 20, of May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourage all residents to celebrate this special observance.
Councilmember Osorio, I'll have you do the second one as well and perhaps we can have the folks from ACE come up to accept the Asian Cultural Experience 15th Annual Fair as well.
Yeah, but just really quickly, I just wanted to say thank you also for the Asian Festival. It was such a great time. We wanted to present this to you here, so just wanted to read it off to you. The Salinas City Council commends and congratulates the Asian Festival, Asian Cultural Experience for their commitment to revitalizing and preserving the history and the culture of Salinas Chinatown area. Congratulations on your 15th anniversary.
You'd like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, City Council Orlando Osorio of our neighborhood and thank you, Mayor Kimberly Craig and everyone here on the diocese. Thank you so much. With the partnership of the City of Salinas, we've been able to have 15 years of an anniversary of preserving, educating and sharing the history of the three Asian communities in Salinas Chinatown. So without your support, everyone on staff has been so helpful with all our permits. We have growing pains as we want to expand and so with your help and with your support, I have some board members here, so thank you so much, City of Salinas and all of our partnerships throughout Salinas. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's great to be here in Salinas and we're lucky to share what we have in Chinatown and I wish more people would participate with us on that day, so look forward to that next year. We'd really love to have everyone.
Excellent, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind waiting just a quick moment, we'll go through the proclamations and then we'll get a photo because we got to make sure you're on Instagram, so if you give us just a brief moment, we'll go on to the, oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 I apologize. Sometimes I get caught up in the agenda, by all means.
On behalf of the Japanese American community in Salinas, thank you very much for the support of the City of Salinas.
Thank you. All right, you can have a seat and then we'll call you up in just another moment for a photo, but we'll go on to National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. And I think we have Chief Murray, I see we have some, oh, there you are, and some commanders and so I'll let you do the introductions of who's joining you today.
Yeah, thank you for having us. John Murray, Captain Commander Danny Moore, Commander Gabriel Gonzalez, Salinas Police Department.
Excellent, okay, oh, sorry, that's my turn. Okay, we'll go over to Steve McShane, I think you have the proclamation.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, chief, commanders. National Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2024. National Police Week runs May 12 through the 18th this year, whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week is which May 15 falls as National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Salinas Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1783, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas we honor the service and sacrifice of the two members of Salinas Police Department who have been killed in the line of duty. Edgar Claude Smith on April 1, 1945, and Jorge David Alvarado Jr. on February 25, 2022. And whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 36th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2024. Therefore, Mayor Kimberly Craig, our mayor and the City, Salinas City Council hereby proclaim May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 12 through May 18 as National Police Officers Week in Salinas and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and across our nation. Thank you.
We're very grateful for the proclamation and the tremendous support we get from the city council and from our community. I know it's kind of a somber week, Memorial Week. Just this year, thus far, 56 officers have been killed in the line of duty. Last year, there were 137 and as you mentioned, we've had two at the Salinas Police Department, one back in the 1930s and of course, one just a couple of years ago, our friend and coworker, so we think of them. What I would ask of the community to try and make it more than just a somber occasion is if you see a police officer, everybody's very good about this, but if you see an officer, say hello, wave, tell them you appreciate it. It really resonates far more than you know. They sometimes will respond uncomfortably with it, but they really appreciate it. So thank you all for the recognition and we appreciate it.
Thank you. And Chief, if you and your commanders and other officers can stick around for a brief moment, we'll get a photo afterwards here. National Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, 2024, and we have our Public Works Director David Jacobs and Councilmember Rocha has the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. National Public Works Week, May 19 through the 25, 2024. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital to the importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Salinas. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, maintenance staff and administrators. And whereas public works department personnel are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our residents. And whereas it is in the general best interest for residents, civic leaders and children in the City of Salinas to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of the public works department and their programs in our community. And whereas this year marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association with the theme Advancing Quality of Life for All. And we urge all residents to join in activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works personnel and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and advancing quality of life for all. Dated the 7th day of May 2024, by Salinas Mayor Kimberly Craig.
Thank you, council, for the proclamation. I want to personally thank all my staff members who work in public works. They're out there doing a great job. They make me look good because they're doing a good job, so I appreciate that and thank you, council, for this proclamation.
Excellent, thank you. And if you can stick around too, starting to sound like a broken record, we'll do.
Viva Jacobs, yes.
Thank you, we'll do Older Americans Month, May 2024. We have Ana Ambreeze here to accept the proclamation and I think I have Councilmember Barrera. Oh, and we have some folks from the firehouse. I would not have caught that without the sign. And Councilmember Barrera, you have the proclamation.
Johnny's yawning already, come on, Johnny. I know Ms. Ambreeze is over there, but I'm going to ask my crew to get in front of here as we read this proclamation, por favor.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, where the podium is.
I'm going up to the podium.
Madam Mayor and fellow colleagues, you're seeing some community giants right here. These folks have been at the Firehouse Recreation Center, not months, but years. Turn around this way.
We're going to, we're going, yeah, if you want, that way you're on TV. The camera's up here, right? Yeah, there you go.
So these folks do such an awesome job at the firehouse. They do hospital visits, they do home visits, they put on gatherings together. As a matter of fact, tomorrow we're celebrating Mother's Day, I'll be there, yes. And you know what, as I read this proclamation, I just want to tell you, I appreciate all of you, I've known you for years. You guys are doing some special work here in Salinas. And you know, we've had lots of seniors that have passed on, but they're not alone. This is a team of people that come together respecting. And you know what, I love this wall over there because they have all the members that have passed and they also have Mayor Joe Gunther. Mayor Joe Gunther was very appreciative over there. So I'm going to read this on behalf of you right now and then we're going to have Ms. Ambreeze say some words as well. Older Americans Month. Whereas the City of Salinas includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, their wisdom and experience to our community. Whereas the theme of Older Americans Month is powered by connection. The City of Salinas is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting, I'll call it, mature adults, their families, their caregivers and acknowledging their many valuable contributions, not only for our society, but for this great city. The Recreation and Park Division offers a variety of programs and services for adults at the Firehouse Recreation Center. In Salinas and California, we recognize the importance of fostering meaningful relationships and social connections. and social connections by bringing people together from all generations and to engage in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all of us. This Salinas community can continue enhancing the lives of adults by sharing facts about the mental, the physical, and emotional health benefits of social connection. And I think we're going to be doing Zoom but tomorrow together, some jumping jacks, promoting resources that help adults engage, like community events, social clubs, volunteer opportunities, connecting adults with local services, such as transportation, thanks to MST, that can help them overcome obstacles to achieving or maintaining meaningful relationships. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Kimble Craig and on behalf of this city council, we hereby proclaim the month of May by nosotros as American Month and urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize adults and the people who serve them as essential. And I'm going to ask the congregation, why don't we give these folks a big round of applause?
And if we could have Ana Ambreeze just say a couple of words and then at the podium with the microphone, just so that the folks at home can hear you, we'd love to have... Love to hear from our wonderful seniors from the firehouse.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Ana Ambreeze, and I'm thrilled to be here to celebrate and honor seniors in our community and of course, the seniors of the Firehouse Recreation Center. So I'd like to invite seniors in our community to join them Monday through Friday from 8 to 1 for a variety of fun and engaging activities and programs. The firehouse is a place to connect, build meaningful relationships that support the overall health and well-being of seniors in our community. So please join them. It is a place to come and have fun. Dance, right, Tony? Again, thank you for proclaiming May as Older Americans Month.
Thank you. Alrighty. We'll go ahead and go on to the next item. David Mack, former Measure E Oversight Committee member, and we have Councilmember McShane here to give the proclamation.
Yeah, just so glad to join the council in honoring one of our public servants in the community. You know, a public servant that is truly community-minded and has expertise beyond his years. You know, as I've come to know David, having worked for the City of Marina, the County of Monterey, and others, I would say he's one of those experts in planning and civic functions. There's no doubt that you've been a leader to your family, to your neighborhood, and to the community at large. Measure E is sad to see you go, really. It's just been a great role. And Steve Ish will be the new appointee, and he's already said, I don't know if I can fill those shoes. Because you ask tough questions and you have really done a terrific job representing the people's interests. So David, on behalf of myself as a council member and certainly the council and the community as a whole, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for giving of your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Wait, wait. Speech, speech.
Do you want to say a few words? Okay, understood. All right. Well, then we will... Steve, I'll task you with handing that off. And I... We're going to go ahead and have the council get up and we'll take pictures with the honorees. If we could have Ace first, then we'll have Police, and then Public Works, and then David, you're on deck. It's not 30 minutes. Ready? One, two. 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 Ready? One, two.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't interrupting. All right, we will start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez, questions? Okay, Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, thank you. You know, one of the issues, I notice, and I'm sure everything has to go up because of rates or what have you, but sometimes I'm concerned. I remember when I would take my truckload of ways to Sun Street, it was by weight. Now you go to Madison Lane, and I know we're talking rates here, but I'm very concerned about, well, fifty dollars doesn't matter how much I take out there, but with the rates, I was talking to city manager and the city attorney yesterday regarding the concern about the quality of service as well. So I'm just going to listen. I'm feeling very uncomfortable with this today, but hopefully we can come to a, how would you say, and I want to put a question here. With these rates, what can our ratepayers, quality of service, what, how do you think we're doing there? I mean, we're asking them, we're going to ask you for a little bit more because to meet our needs to run the business. But I'm always concerned about the quality of service.
Yes, that's a natural cause. I am new with the city, so I think our public works director, David Jacobs, might be able to assist me on the history and how things are progressing.
So we're constantly working with Republic Services in terms of their services to the customers and what kind of vehicles they have on the routes. We have sent them letters to get them to conform to the franchise agreement. We're trying to close out 2022 on those issues. We're very close to that. And with that closeout, we're going to do an audit of Republic Services to make sure that they are following what the franchise agreement states. And as part of that franchise agreement, this is, this rate increase is what the council agreed to when we entered into this agreement.
And thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And with that said, and I heard about the audit, are you going to be able to share information with this council as far as there's improvements? And by when do you think we'll see something coming out of this audit?
Yes, we will be able to share the information with council once we finalize everything on it. And then if, once we, if we do, if, when we finish the audit of Republic, we'll also share that information with the council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sornio, questions?
No questions, thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this? Sorry, I apologize, missed the whole left side. Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
Yeah, I believe it was about a year ago, this council asked for an audit. I think council member, I think it was maybe four or five of us at several different times. So what's the status of that? I hear you saying that, you know, we're going to conduct an audit. Is that an audit, an independent audit, or we've done some internal auditing? What does that look like?
We have a consultant onboard, R3 consultant, that does trash services throughout the state. They're the leading expert on franchise agreements. They helped us actually craft the current franchise agreement. We do have them on retainer. We are going to bring to council, probably not next one, the next meeting after that, a, an agreement to extend the contract with R3 so that they will be able to do this audit for us. Does that answer the question, hopefully?
Yes, it does, because I, and you mentioned that there would be an additional audit. Is that correct?
Correct.
And do we have a timeline for that?
Usually six to eight months. Once we enter into contract, we'll know more once we bring that agreement to council, and we'll have an agreement, and they'll have a timeline to finish it out.
All right, you said that you, we've sent some letters requesting some corrections or for them to honor the franchise agreement, and you're working through that.
Yes.
But are there still pending issues to those corrections?
Not currently. These are, these are issues that were 2022. We've been obviously communicating with Republic in terms of the issues that council has brought to us, and we try to work through those.
So there were some concerns brought about the time of date, that trash was being picked up, recycling, and have those issues been addressed and resolved?
They're ongoing, mainly because of the number of drivers that Republic has on staff.
David, I have a city manager who's jumping out of his seat.
Councilmember Sandoval, thank you for these questions. I would like to separate and stay on track specifically for the rates at this moment. I am cognizant of your questions. I am working, we are working as a team with our legal department on the subject of the audit. We will have more to share in the coming weeks, and so I would like to separate the two.
Well, I appreciate that, but in order for me to make a decision on the rate, and I recognize there's an agreement in the franchise agreement for a rate increase, but there's also an agreement that there'll be a certain level of quality, service, and functions that they'll perform. And it does, it seems to be, as David Jacobs just said, an ongoing issue. So, you know, I'd like to continue with my questions. You know, one of the concerns brought to me was leaking of hydraulic fluid from the trucks. Is that something that we address internally, as that affects, you know, staff time and things like that?
Councilmember Sandoval, I have my city managers asking that you stay on topic, please.
And the reason why is I want to give everyone an opportunity that didn't come here to talk audit and other things. They knew the rates was on the agenda, so it doesn't serve us all well to do that. But I certainly appreciate your line of questioning, but I don't want us to negotiate the talk I'm having, we're having with Republic in open session at this time.
Right, and I recognize that, but at the same time, I'm going to have to ask questions. And in order for me to make an informed decision, I need some answers.
On the rates, you're allowed to ask questions. That's what's on the agenda.
Correct. But in order for me to decide about rates, city manager, I have to know what our, what service our residents are receiving and base my decisions on that. So I'm done with my questions as far as that, but it's just, there's, I wish we had the findings of the audit or some information. The council has not been provided anything like that. So before we agree to honor our end of the bargain, it would be nice to have seen what the city has found and what Republic has done, because at this moment, I'm not seeing that information before me. I understand that there's an agreement made to raise rates, but there's also an agreement with Republic. And so that's my concern. Those are all my questions, and I'll reserve for comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocha, questions?
When this came up to the city council last year, a motion was made to approve the rates, but to provide direction to pursue the audit to assess compliance with the franchise agreement as it related to the basis of whether or not to, to increase the rates. So I just want to say, I think that should Councilmember Sandoval want to address that in his comments, it would be totally fine, as that was the motion that was made last year, which in my opinion, it's part of the discussion. My question would be to the city attorney is, since that motion was made as part of last year's rate approval, where do you see that coming into play in this discussion? Do you think in your opinion, this council has the legal right to perhaps delay this and look into whether or not the franchise agreement is being complied with as a part of considering whether or not to increase the rates?
So I do not, Councilmember Rocha, and here's why. So when the council approved this collection services agreement in 2021, it established maximum service rates, and those are included as one of the attachments to the collection services agreement. And so so long as those proposed adjustments to the rates are within those maximum levels, those rates are in compliance with the agreement. Now, there are issues that this council and the community have raised with respect to performance, and there is a separate mechanism under the collection services agreement for dealing with those performance issues, which can ultimately result in a breach of the agreement. Those two mechanisms are separate, they're not necessarily tied with each other. And so you are correct that the council did provide direction to complete that audit and report back to the council. What I'm hearing is, a portion of that audit is done with respect to 2022, but with respect to 2023 and perhaps 2024, additional work will need to be done in order to conduct that audit, unless I heard you incorrectly, David, that's what I understand.
Yeah, as part of our, our agreement with Republic, they are agreeing, hoping to agree to pay for the audit, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with R3 to do that audit. So we've been in negotiations with them over the last year, year and a half, to try to get this audit underway.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, should this council not approve the rate increase, would we be in violation of the contract, or what would that mean for us as a city?
I think that you could potentially be in violation of the agreement. I mean, certainly, that's what Republic would argue. We would certainly be in a dispute at that point, I would think.
Understood. Those are all of my questions.
Councilmember McShane, questions?
It all seems pretty straightforward to me. I just would see if it's appropriate to have Republic Services say anything. I mean, I know there's some representatives here.
That's up to you.
Would now be a good time? Is there anybody from Republic Services?
Councilmember McShane, they can speak in public comment if they'd like.
Public comment only, okay. I didn't know if that was part of the presentation. Then, no questions, Mayor, thanks.
All right, we will go to public comment. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
You didn't get all the old folks out of here by five. My name is Eric Peterson. In the interest of full disclosure, along with Bill Gates and Warren Buffett, I own stock in Republic Services. I was looking over the first quarter report, and it's got acquisitions, forty-one million dollars. It's got an entry called issuance of stock with a negative twenty-five million dollars, which sure looks to me like a stock buyback. That's significant. I don't know how many of you remember Robert Reich. He was in the Clinton cabinet as Secretary of Labor. He's a professor at UC Berkeley and a columnist. His column yesterday, "Stock Buybacks Are Lethal," literally. Stock buybacks, you know, if Republicans spent forty-one million bucks buying other companies and twenty-five million bucks buying back stock, Republic doesn't need the rate increase, plain and simple. Also, we've had performance issues. Our trash last week was picked up a day late. And I'm sure you all remember when a group of Republican employees came to council with problems with Republic. They do not deserve a rate increase. Definitely not the typical rubber stamping we do every year. And maybe it would get through to Republic that they need to treat their employees better. They need to put more money into running the business instead of buying other businesses, which according to Forbes Magazine is a big way they grow. And this should be turned down, plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, David Masonev. I just am a little confused as to the order in which this was taking place. We're going to give them a raise, but we're not going to review their service until after we give them the raise. That makes no sense to me. It seems like your audit should have been done prior to voting on whether this was, you know, the right thing to do. That's all.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm another representative of Montevia community. We have this issue on Piazza Way every week. They forget to pick up the, I guess it's the green, the grass and the leaves, and people call me, and I'm like, you know, I'd had to have a couple Spanish-speaking guys. I taught them how to use a phone, not like that, no disrespect. I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. I taught them how to reach out to them and let them know that they speak Spanish, they'll help you. And I did that, and it worked out really good. But like everyone says, I mean, you can't give people money if they don't deserve it. It's, it's not the way to do business. It's not the way we do it. Let's do our research first. Like the gentleman said, let's quit rubber stamping everything. Let's take a look at it, let's take a vote before. You know, before you guys do this in the morning, you should have got together and had a little meeting, and hey, you know what, what do you guys think? Because now we're having disputes out here in the public that shouldn't be going on, that should be gone behind closed doors. We, we're not here to hear that. We're here to hear, hey, we're going to get good service, and if you get good service, we're going to take care of you. That's all we're asking for. And it's not cheap. Garbage has gone up, what, like ten, fifteen percent the last year? So what's the increase every year? I mean, I don't have that information in front of me. Is it fifteen, twenty percent per year or every two years? How does it work? Okay, well, thank you, guys, just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yes, the predicament that you are in is yours. You own it. If you know that you have budget conversations and times to vote, having the conversation about whether or not the audit was done should have been done a month ago. I want to let you know that you can schedule this type of meeting earlier next year. You don't have to repeat this, because it seems like you guys are saying, we need to make a change or there needs to be something different, but at the same time, you're doing it at a time where you're completely unempowered. My quote of the day comes from Steve Urkel, and I think it's from the program called Family Matters. And he used to say, "Did I do that?" Yeah, you did. You don't have to do it again. Next time, have your conversations ahead of time, ask for your audits ahead of time, and don't be told the day that you have to vote, and you don't truly understand the legalities of what you're doing, because you're afraid to violate the contract. Now you're going to make us pay more. Do your planning, schedule your stuff, and don't Urkel us out, because yeah, you did that.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Barrera, advocate for the Republic Service drivers. I am here in opposition to the Republic Service rate hike. I could understand if our residents' needs were being met and all the regulations were being followed in the franchise agreement, but they are not. I have emailed each and every one of you pictures and videos of leaky oil trucks, trucks with holes in the recycle cylinder where glasses falling out onto our streets, not to mention overweight that are damaging our roads. Drivers still working well past 6:00 PM. As per the franchise agreement, there are even drivers working twelve to fourteen hours per day. Working the drivers to the max and with mandatory overtime takes its toll on the drivers. It leads to injury, not spending enough time with their families, and bad morale within a company. It leads to workers going on workers' comp claims, thus creating open routes, and that leaves the customers not getting their garbage picked up. Then we have the requested audit, that we have not heard anything from you from over a year ago. Thirty minutes from here in Gilroy, there is a garbage company named Recology, where they get paid a lot more money, better retention, better respected, and no open routes. We all love our garbage drivers, but Republic Service has no business raising their rates until they can follow the franchise agreement rules and serve our residents one-hundred percent. And if that's, and if not, that's just not fair. And by the way, Steve, congratulations on your retirement.
Thanks, Chris.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Hermann, good evening, Council and Honorable Mayor. My name is Hermann Hernandez from Republic Services. I'm the general manager. Nice to meet you. I've been with Republic Services a little bit over ten and a half years, been in the street over twenty-six years. I'm new to the Central Valley, love it out here. So just wanted to address some items that have been talked about. We have improved our fleet. We actually have four new vehicles that we received in 2023, two as of this, as of today, and we have another scheduled anywhere from twelve or seventeen coming in here. We hired an extra mechanic. We did a shift change on one of the welders. So he's here in the evening, so he's welding trucks, and I can tell you that they welded every single truck that had any leakage. There's going to be leakage because of the hydraulic hoses, and again, we're working with our drivers to identify that. In regards to headcount, we wanted to make sure that our drivers have a work-life balance. So what we did was we hired additional seven drivers, and I just put in a requisition for four more. I can tell you that none of our drivers work over sixty hours, none of them work over fourteen hours. I want them all to go home and make sure that they're spending quality time with their families. Safety is our number one priority and always will be. As far as overweight, I heard that too. We're here in Q1, we're at a ninety-six-point-thirty-one compliance rate, ninety-five percent as of last month. Additionally, we're making sure that our service reliability is at ninety-nine-point-eight-seven and ninety-nine-point-nine-one on our residential and commercial line of business. So again, our priority is to make sure that we service the city of Salinas, and we're our partnership with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, come on up.
Hi, my name is Emerald Calgar, and we have graffiti on the north side by Ike Bana and those little shops. And I gave the secretary the card, but I just wanted to...
Okay, we're on Republic Services fees and contracts, so thank you, I appreciate it. All right, anybody else? We'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and go back to council members for final comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Craig. You know, I just, it's interesting that when we talk about business costs and increased costs, I want to make sure that we as a city, within and despite our contractual obligations, are making sure that these are manageable, you know? Just as business costs increase, so do costs for the average family member that we aspire to pay, more and more each year. So it's important that we do so in a way that is manageable for them. I too would like to make sure that we're staying on top of the audit, which I do recall was a part of last year's deliberations. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Madam Mayor, there's a critical vote. I know his comments, and I'm just concerned that we haven't brought this audit before this meeting today. And I think before I can vote and really understanding the situation correctly, Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask the, if I, during my comments here, if I may ask the city attorney, is it possible to wait for the rate increase until we do get this audit?
Go ahead.
So I would ask this question of David Jacobs. What is the timing, or Jim Pia, perhaps you know, the timing of the audit with respect to the 2022 performance that we can report back to this council?
I do not have an exact date of, the audit is all-encompassing, it's not year by year. It's called for, it can happen year by year in the franchise agreement, but it's not, it doesn't have to be. We get, I believe it's three audits over the period of time of the contract, so it's not annual, to my understanding, David?
Yes.
And so we have work to do, and I'm not going to hide that. We have, we have done some post, if you will, July 1st starts of the rates, but then you get the, in the franchise agreement, I believe it talks about billings will go out after the fact, and so it'll confuse customers, but that is a possibility. That would be one possibility tonight. But the audit, unless, David, you have some specifics, I know we're still talking, I spoke with Republic today even, we still have more work to do, and so I don't want to make a promise tonight because we're under the gun to make a promise on the audit date. Do you have anything else?
No, like I, there is, like you were saying, that there is, there is a audit clause within the franchise agreement. We wanted to move that up because of the issues that we found in 2022, and we've been negotiating that over the last year or so.
Okay, so here's what's required into the contract. Sorry, Mayor, you want me to stop?
Nope, go for it.
So you have to make a good faith effort by May 1st, and we're late on that, in order to consider and approve these rates, which will not become effective until July 1st. So it submits to you that we do have some additional time here to consider this proposed rate increase, not much time, and so perhaps that would give a little window for the city manager and the public works director to provide some additional information on performance questions.
Just a bit of clarification on that. The franchise agreement does say that we would approve the rates prior to April 31st or around May 1st as possible. I believe that's it. It says May 1st, I believe, in the franchise agreement.
Yeah, we have to make a good faith effort by May 1st of each year to approve those rates. So we're making the good faith effort by having this conversation here, in my opinion, and this council is asking some questions about performance. And the question that Councilmember Barrera asked me is whether or not there is additional time for additional discussion. In my opinion, I think there is, but I defer.
So on that, and I do appreciate the question, and I appreciate all the questions up here. However, I cannot promise that on May 7th today, as we face a council recess beginning in July, that we will have that audit done in six weeks. I cannot do that, and I won't guess, and I won't bring David into this. We need some time, and I would ask, you know, and I recognize, as Councilmember Rocha said, it was part of the motion last year, but we have work to do, and I don't want to pick a day out of the, out of the calendar, Councilmember.
Yeah, Mayor, I apologize, this is going to be not only comments or questions, but Mr. Pia, you said a couple of times, we still have more work to do, but you're asking us today to do a vote on something that we really don't have any information in front of us concerning this audit. So I guess in good faith, and in listening to the city attorney, you're saying you don't promise in six weeks, but I'll be honest with you, I have a difficult time voting on this as one member here without having specifics in front of me. So my question is, can we table it and work as difficult, as diligent as we can to make this happen? But I would, I would make a motion to table this item till we get this audit and work as quickly as we can to make it happen, or we don't violate the law either.
Second?
Okay, so just for clarification, I'm going to seek clarification from the city attorney, because the question was, can we table this item? And if so, I'd like to make a motion to table the item. Is that some, so could you answer the question and then determine whether or not the motion can be made?
So, thank you, Mayor. I think the motion would be to continue the discussion of this to a later meeting, and I would ask that we continue it to no later than your last meeting in June, right? So that we could get more information and that so we could take action on the rates prior to the July 1st effective date. I would really strongly recommend that we take action prior to July 1st.
Sir, is this for the 25th?
Or I would suggest the 18th.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera? Okay. And Councilmember Sandoval, you seconded that. Would you be agreeable to that clarification?
Yes, just with the clarification that he said we'd be presented with additional information. I mean, whatever progress has been made on the audit, it's still concerning not to have all the information, but I know the staff will make a good faith effort to complete that.
Great, thank you. Okay, back to the lecture at hand. We will go to Councilmember Sornio for final comments.
Yeah, I also, I also feel that, just remembering now that there was a talk about having an audit done, you know, almost a year ago, so that, that part is concerning. I do realize that as costs go up... I do realize that as costs go up, this is something that's inside of the contract. So do I think that we're eventually going to approve these, these rate increases? I do. I, I just, I've just got to say that I want to hear a little bit more on the progress also, though, and the conversations that are happening with, with Republic Services. And I would encourage city manager to see how quickly we can get that done. And I look forward to that conversation when it comes back.
Okay, Councilmember Sandoval, final comments?
Yeah, some of these issues are happening across our city, not just in our district, not, not, you know, I mean, it's across our city. These conversations, as I've stated before, are difficult. I believe that it's important to have these in public so the people know that we're doing our best effort. I know our staff, you know, with our shortages is doing the best they can. And I appreciate my colleague Barrera's approach to delay it until we get more information. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha, final comments?
Thank you. I do remember the discussion last year, and I'll just say, there was a lot of angst about voting to approve the rate increase last year. And the compromise that was reached amongst this council then was to conduct an audit for compliance as part of the approval. And I believe that was even passed on a forceful split. So I just want to highlight that this council is trying to do our due diligence to study whether or not Republic is in compliance with the franchise agreement. And we tried to do it with enough time. We're put in a position to where that that wasn't completed. So I would just ask, you know, it doesn't have to be part of a motion, but just to put it out there, perhaps we develop a subcommittee of this council to participate in those discussions around the status of the audit. And I bring that up because I don't want to be here next year and we have the same discussion as to why this wasn't completed and, and we're, you know, dealing with it in that moment. And also, I don't want to be getting in the day-to-day operations of the city. So I don't want to be constantly emailing, asking, you know, there should be a vehicle of this council to accomplish that. And so I would say that. I also comment that this is a difficult discussion because the employees of Republic at the local level are great. And when my constituents talk to people who work at Republic, they have good things to say. I work with them regularly, so this is nothing about the employees of Republic at the local level. This is a much larger discussion about the way Republic as a corporation conducts themselves at the executive level. And they do need to do a better job of the way they treat their employees, the compensation of their employees, and making sure that they are in compliance with our franchise agreement. But, so I support the motion, and I would hope that there'd be great opportunity for, for more attention to following up on the audit at the council level. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember McShane, final comments?
Yeah, I might be in the minority here, but Republic is a partner. And I would say it is about the local level, because service is a reflection on the local staff. They're either doing a good job and the equipment's maintained, or it's not. To stay within what's before us, to the city manager's point, this is about a rate adjustment, not necessarily about performance. The rate adjustment is within the range of the franchise agreement. And if you read the report, it's largely driven by the tipping fees charged by the landfill. To bring it back to the staff, yeah, there was an audit called for. And, and I got the same calls that some of the other staff and, and councilmembers got about leaky trucks, poor service. My experience has been that those things are being addressed. Have they been addressed completely? Doesn't sound like it, based on some of the feedback up here. You know, I, I just don't know why we have to wait for there to be this audit and these audit results. Call Christina, call Taylor, call the general manager. I mean, we're in touch on a regular basis. There's been a lot of responsiveness, whether it's an enclosure, or again, poor service or poorly maintained vehicles. I guess I just, I just, I get some disconnect there. And, and I think maybe bringing Republic back for a presentation, not holding up the agreement. We're, we're married for a good amount of time here. This franchise agreement, I mean, unless we want to take drastic thermonuclear action and hit the button and get out of the agreement and cost everybody lots of money and piss off the residents ultimately, you know, let's bring Republic back. If it takes a subcommittee, great. I won't have to be on it. But, but I would just say, this is also about trusting staff. Staff is before us with a recommendation for this, this, this change. And you can see the wide eyes of the Republic staff and their notes they're taking. You know, I'm sure there can be some follow-up. So, yeah, I'd make a substitute motion to approve the recommendation presented and leave it upon staff and maybe a council member that's so inclined to ask for a future presentation to have Republic come back and talk about the four new trucks and the new hires and, you know, efforts. So that's my substitute motion, if there's a second out there.
I'll second. And my comments echo Steve's. You know, interestingly, Republic comes to us every year. And I was prepared to actually have a really robust discussion over multifamily units, because that was the big topic last year, actually. And so every year, you know, I agree with Councilmember McShane in the context of really trying to work collaboratively with our partners. And working collaboratively establishes a level of trust, recognizing that there are issues, but also understanding that we need to hold up our end of the bargain for bringing forward rate increases. The rate increases are very fair. They're very marginal. And that's what has been asked of us today. So I'm happy to support the substitute motion, and we'll call for that first. Thank you.
Substitute motion made by Councilmember McShane, second by Mayor Craig, for, to approve staff recommendation. Councilmember Barrera?
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
No.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
No.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. We will go on to the original motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
No.
Councilmember Osornio?
No.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We will go on to the next item, and I just want to take a moment and thank Jamie Platts. That was your first presentation with city council. Sorry, it was a little, you know, up and down. But very much appreciate your presentation and welcome to Salinas. Next up, 24-149, the pavement management and street selection policy. And we will receive a report from Adriana Robles, our city engineer. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. So this is actually a follow-up to the February 20 presentation that you received. And what it does, it incorporate, the policy incorporates comments from the April 9 Finance Committee. So what you're being asked today is to receive a presentation on pavement conditions, long-term pavement management strategies, funding allocation, and street selection, and to accept the findings of the 2023 pavement management update and approve a resolution approving the pavement management and street selection policy. So some of this will be a little repetitive for you. Hopefully, it is repetitive and, you know, you know exactly what, where I'm coming from. So pavement deteriorates in various, various aspects, various things kind of come together to, to tear apart our pavement. So that's the age of the pavement, traffic loading, climate, and maintenance. The City of Salinas has an average pavement condition index of 53. This is across all of our roadways. The map here shows you basically the status of the roads. This map actually was updated last year, spring and summer 2023, by our consultant. They did visual inspection, and that's how we got the updated report. So in speaking with regards to pavement management strategies, there's basically three basic strategies. The first strategy is the best first. And that strategy basically focuses on maintaining the good streets. Another strategy is the worst first. And that strategy, as it states, is basically to focus on the worst streets and try to bring it up from, from the bottom up. And then there's critical point. So the critical, critical point management, basically it selects a street right before it goes down to what would be a more expensive treatment for that street or solution for that street. And that's what this graph is showing you. Basically, if it's that point right before the red dot, the right before it, it goes into a next treatment, which would be more expensive. So what we're proposing for the policy is a street selection distribution of funds, where 60% of the funds go to major streets, 30% go to residential streets, and 10% go to stopgap maintenance. Now, the goal to this street selection, the funding distribution, is basically to preserve the major roads, which obviously impact most of the people. To, what we're also doing, and this is to incorporate what we heard from the Finance Committee, is we're trying to incorporate equity and inclusion when we're talking about residential streets. And then we're trying to allocate funds for, for the annual maintenance activities. So with regards to major streets, now you've seen this before. This is the way we would come up with the selection of the prioritization of major streets. It's the pavement condition index, the average daily traffic, and the weighted effectiveness ratio. The weighted effectiveness ratio is a ratio provided by our Street Saver program. And it basically ranks the treatment cost with the anticipated service life. So then it gives you a grade for that, for that treatment. So what we're proposing is basically to add, to give a score to each one of these categories. And then we tally up the scores, and that's how we figure out what the priorities should be. So this is something new. At Finance Committee, we were asked to look at social factors when we're talking about treatment for residential streets. We had some brainstorming sessions, and what we came up with were four factors that we feel would, you know, help the community by addressing certain, certain aspects. So what we're, we're proposing is a strategy that identifies equity and inclusion with regards to environmental factors, one of them being accessibility. Accessibility or ADA compliance is a federal requirement. So depending on the type of treatment we do on a roadway, I know that we've received requests, well, why don't you just rebuild the road? Rebuilding the road also includes adding ADA ramps and making sure we come up to ADA compliance. So this we, we just, we thought would be a good, a good factor to incorporate is curb access. Because obviously, you know, when we're talking equity and inclusion, we're also talking about serving all residents, including people with disabilities. The other is tree canopy cover. Trees improve quality of life by reducing the urban heat island effect and removing pollutants from the air. You haven't seen it yet, but the Urban Forestry Management Plan that we've, we worked on identifies that the city doesn't have an even distribution of trees. So we feel that because trees do provide a benefit to the quality of life, that trees should be a factor for the social aspects. The other is disadvantaged communities. In 2012, state Senate, state bill 535 required that the California EPA identify communities that are designated disadvantaged communities based on geographic, socioeconomic, public health, and environmental hazard criteria. So what we're proposing is to go based off of data that has already been produced by the state of California in, basically in looking at, as a social factor for, for prioritization of residential streets. And the last is poverty. We know that, you know, people that are, that are poor have lower health. We know that there's certain, there's certain people that are marginalized. And we want to focus on poverty as well as a factor to make sure that we don't, you know, our goal is equity and inclusion. So what we're proposing is to, to use again, data that has already been created by the state. And this is from 2021, the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment released the California Communities Environmental Screening Tool. It's called EnviroScreen 4.0. So we're proposing to use that as the other social factor. So this is how we're proposing to, to make this distribution. Social factors similar to the way that the PCI and the WER and the ADTs in the previous, in the major streets, social factors would also get a grade. And this grade would be, would be applied district-wide. So if we take a look at the different social factors, you know, once we're, once we're adding them, the most a district could get would be 20 points in addition to whatever, whatever score they already had. So last time, I talked to you about looking at pavement management in two phases. The first phase was going to be to equalize pavement conditions. We're still proposing the same thing, except now we're proposing to incorporate those social factors at the time that we make the selection for the district. So we basically take, add up those social factors, and we subtract them from the PCI for the district. So therefore, we're reducing the score of the district, and then we go with the lowest district. So at this point now, we're, we've incorporated social factors into the pavement condition. Phase two, and this again was previously discussed, was to distribute the funds, this is after the pavement conditions have been equalized, to distribute the funds based on the size of the pavement areas within each district. Now, the way we would incorporate social factors in this case would be, basically, we're proposing to say, okay, pavement area will, would contribute 80% of the distribution and social factors 20%. So we're basically taking away 20% of the overall and then adding 20% of those social factors, and that's how we would adjust those percentages. And then the goal at that point would, oh, sorry, I lost my truck. So what happens then is we would go down to the street level after we've done all the distribution at the district level where we have incorporated the social factors, we'd go down to the, to the street level, and that's where we apply the PCI and the WER. So then, once we've selected the district that gets So then, once we've selected the district that gets the treatment, then from there we will select the streets. And the goal overall is to create a major and residential streets list that's a five-year list, so that not only staff, but also our utility companies and everybody's aware of where we'll be going. And then the last one, the 10%, is the stopgap maintenance. In September of last year, I gave you a presentation on pavement restoration. That was a short-term plan to address the disrepair of the roadways. The long-term strategy for pavement maintenance incorporates targeted strategies. So what we're proposing is dedicated crack sealing in the fall before the rain starts, let's prevent the water from getting into our pavement because we said climate was a factor, and then in the spring, dedicated time for pothole repair. And this last one, basically, we asked, this is part of your, this is part of the pavement management update, we asked our consultant to do a five-year projections, basically, where would we be looking at, now we're looking at funding, right? I'd like to point you to our current funding, which is the orange one. At our current funding, we basically in five years would be at a PCI of 46. You know, obviously, then some of us can dream and we think, okay, if we want to keep a level PCI, then we would have to increase funding. So with that, I want to say implementing a proactive approach to project planning and scheduling of pavement maintenance and rehabilitation contributes significantly to efficiency and cost effectiveness. The strategies used to develop this pavement management and selection policy create an efficient, defined, and repeatable process for prioritizing streets for selection in a pavement maintenance or rehabilitation project while including the goals of inclusion and equity into residential streets. This policy doesn't include any PCI target-specific or budget request. So what, all we're saying is, let's write the policy, let's establish how we're, let's establish the rules, how we're going to do it. That way, everybody knows how we move forward, the staff knows, contractors know, you know, the general public knows how we do our work. And I'll take any questions at this point.
Excellent, thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez, questions? Councilmember Barrera? Councilmember Sornio? All right, to my left, Councilmember Sandoval.
One thing I've been struggling with is the consideration for the most, you know, the amount of pavement. Because when I look at the charts, it's clear what specific areas have major issues. And so, can you help me, or what is the logic behind the amount of pavement being a factor?
So that would be where we're talking about the second phase of the residential streets, right? So at this stage, what we're saying is that the pavement condition across the whole city is the same, but not each district has the same amount of pavement. So then the distribution, we were saying, was based on the amount of pavement in each district.
So this is referring to when everybody is equal?
Correct.
Then that's how we're going to address it?
Correct. But now we've made the adjustment where we are taking basically 20% and incorporating the social factors. So it will be slightly skewed, but we're basically making that so that we incorporate social factors into it.
Do you see that as a bit difficult to navigate as, you know, an area that has a large pavement because our districts are created with equal population in mind, right? So when you factor in the social factors, the districts that have more, possibly more social factors are going to be more compact, right? They have less pavement typically, right? Because, you know, like, I'll give you an example, some districts have a lot of single-family homes and, you know, things like that. So, you know, some of my colleagues' districts are very small compared to other districts. So, you know, on one end, we're saying, we're going to give credit to if you have a larger area, and then we have other factors that'll address, you know, all our other social and economic things. So is, do you see that as a bit contradictory?
Well, I see it a little challenging, but I don't see it exactly contradictory. I mean, I think that we can marry the two by saying, you know, we are addressing, we're addressing pavement, we're not going to say, okay, we're not going to address any one district. We're saying we're going to address the districts, but we're going to prioritize the districts whose social factors rise to the top.
Thank you, those are all my questions, I have comments, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Does the social factors element apply to the first phase of this policy or only to the second phase?
To both.
To both phases?
To both, yes. So at each of the two residential phases, the social factors would be incorporated before we come up with the list of streets.
Understood, that was my only question, thank you for your work.
Councilmember McShane.
Yeah, thanks, Adriana. Yeah, I guess I'm just going to kind of play off of what Councilmember Sandoval said as to not all districts are created equal, right?
Correct.
I mean, clearly, this policy is based on where people live, but what about where people work, right? I mean, economic factors, because the same roads are being used. I mean, was that brought up at all?
Well, that's for, so when we start applying the social factors, that's exclusively for residential streets. So the major streets, the streets that impact most people, those don't have this qualifier to them.
Sure. And as for age of streets, because that's got to play in as well, we have some streets that are 100 years old.
Correct, the age of streets does play into it. You know, we kind of look at it in the sense of when we're analyzing a street, it really depends how the street was built. There's some streets that actually, you know, have concrete, have, you know, layer upon layer of them. There's streets that have something we call dullomite, which is a horrible base that should never have been used, but we have them. So, you know, that's why the visual inspection is important. So we do do visual inspection of the roadways, and we are proposing to continue the visual inspections and to continue, basically, the analysis so that, you know, we have our five-year list, and then we still keep studying the roads as we're treating them.
Okay, so in phase one or phase two residential street, let's just say we have two streets in equal age, equal condition, one street's in an impoverished, say, high poverty rate, traditionally disadvantaged factors, five, and there's no trees, that tree, that street's going to get priority.
So it's not based on streets, it's based on districts?
Sorry.
So the...
That district and the streets within that district would get priority.
So, again, if, it really depends on what the current pavement condition is, if the social factors, which could be up to 20...
Sure.
What we're saying is, your PCI is going to be reduced based on those social factors, and we're going to address the lowest district first. So, and then within that district, then we prioritize the streets.
Got it. Again, let me just, let me just put it together again one more time. So same age, same condition, one street within that district, that district has fewer trees, higher poverty rate, and the conditions, which, basically, the district with the higher poverty rate and fewer trees is going to get funded first.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Possibly in the sense that, remember, there's other factors, there's accessibility, there's also...
I'm just saying if those factors were the same.
So you're saying district-wise or you're saying...
District-wise, let's start there, I don't want to get into streets, because, yeah, you said it's...
Okay, so district-wide, if we were to say, okay, everybody, two districts have the same pavement condition?
Yep.
If there's a district who has higher poverty, higher, lower tree canopy...
Yep, and higher disadvantaged...
Less accessibility, then that one has, what we're saying is, then that one, the PCI for that district gets lowered. So then we're going to attack the lowest PCI first.
It'll get funded first.
It'll get funded first, correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that, okay. And let me ask the city attorney, does this open us up to any sort of legal challenge if I'm a taxpayer in one district versus another and, you know, hey, these factors? I mean, I guess it's, maybe it's not been tried, I don't know if maybe the city of...
I can actually step in.
Oakland or, you know, I mean, is there anybody legal or is this...
So we actually made that question, after we received that comment, we made that question of our consultant.
Yeah.
Our consultant said that a number of cities are basically attempting to incorporate...
Yeah, I've heard that, right.
...social factors. He told us that Berkeley is looking, he's a consultant for Berkeley also, he said they've been discussing this for a number of years, but they haven't come with a firm decision as to which factors they're going to go with. I also was looking into it, and City of San Diego, basically, they do have incorporated into their program that I think was just passed last year, they also incorporated social factors.
Okay, so two questions, and then that'll be it, Mayor. Where did this come from, the social factors?
That was actually a request from Councilmember Rocha.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Anybody else support it?
Yes, the Finance Committee supported it.
Oh, so that was Orlando, and I just want to know which council members were responsible for the social factors, okay. So Orlando and Rocha. So back to my question, to Callahan, does, do you think, sorry, I mean, obviously, this has been attempted in other cities and it's being looked at, do you see any potential for legal ramifications? I mean, I realize that anybody can sue for anything, but, you know, do you see more exposure in this than other types of policies?
Not necessarily, Councilmember, because this is an implementation, as I understand it, of SB 535, which is funding directed to disadvantaged communities. So this is an incorporation of that state legislation into our policy, that's the intent of this. And so, like I tell you every time you ask me that question, anybody can sue for anything.
I know, that's why I said that.
But we're incorporating it based on state legislation and hopefully making appropriate findings to support.
Understood, okay, no other questions, thank you, Adriana.
I just have a question on, how are you identifying or finding the data for determining the poverty level of each district?
So the poverty level, that, again, is also a state data. So this was back in 2021, the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, they were tasked, and this is again with SB 535, they were tasked to come up with this tool. And so that's the EnviroScreen 4.0. So that tool we also use for, and it's required for us to use, for different grants and things that, when we pursue funding. So one of the tools for that is poverty. So we're basically saying we're taking that tool and incorporating that.
Got it. And so the city is able to manipulate that data to divide it by district, then?
Yes, it's all GIS-based, so then we can take that data.
Okay, those are all my questions, I'll go out to the public, does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Actually, Mayor, I had a follow-up question based on the presentation.
Understood, okay. If you'll give me one brief moment, public, thank you, sorry about that, I will allow Councilmember Rocha to ask the follow-up question.
My question was, you mentioned that the PCI score of the district was going to be changed when you incorporated the social factors, and then you would identify the streets within that district to pursue based on that...
Correct.
Structure. Does the social factors apply to the streets within a specific district?
No.
Okay, understood. Those are all, that's all my questions.
Great, thank you. Out to the public, hi, welcome, you'll have two minutes for this item.
Yeah, I have noticed in this city that the underrepresented communities are often overlooked, and that people that have less resources often will have the worst roads. And the idea that these neighborhoods need trees is also something that I've seen, I don't necessarily like agreeing with Rocha, but I believe that the truth is that if we do have this type of marginalistic practices where one community is not served as well as the other, that investing in that community now and waiting your turn, that would be like our neighborhood, we can wait our turn to better serve the community, I don't believe that that's a horrible idea, and I appreciate the fact that you're moving forward in that way.
It's not my curfew yet. My name is Eric Peterson, and it's really good to see the social part of this worked in, thank you. When I was a kid, I got into bicycling because it was fun. Not everybody has that luxury. We have a lot of people here who rely on bicycles as their primary means of transportation. I didn't hear the evil words chip sealing, but they sure sprung to mind. And those bicycles that people use for their day-to-day activities because it's their best way to get around have tires that wear out far quicker with chip sealing than anything else I've ever seen. And I bring this up simply because I really hope we're not going to be chip sealing anything. It's not only a lot more wear and tear, previously, I mentioned seeing somebody who had crashed his bicycle on chip sealing, and it looked like somebody took a bite out of his shoulder. And that was different circumstances, he was having fun too until he fell down. That Lycra outfit costs a lot of money too. But if we can avoid chip sealing and work on better pavement, a lot of people will gain, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zelaye, welcome.
Hi, Peter Zelaye, North Salinas. I would reject this policy completely. I've never seen anything so unnecessarily complicated and convoluted in my entire life. Basically, you're trying to repair roads, and the only thing you should worry about in repairing roads is the condition of the road and whether or not it's heavily traveled. So in District 5, if you have a heavily traveled road that is in poor condition, it would bubble to the top of a priority list. If you have a heavily traveled road that is in good condition, no priority. Or if you have a poor road that's not heavily traveled, does not receive any priority. You saw what the funding looked like, you don't have a lot of money, you have a little amount of money. How are you best going to use a little amount of money? So it seems to me you would go to each district, and you would look to see which roads are heavily traveled that are in poor condition. In my district, we have a road called Pueblo. It received a gutter-to-gutter repavement. Why? When I asked my council member to investigate, he said it received the most complaints. That's an idiotic criteria to determine how you're going to use a very little amount of money. This particular policy has as its benefit at least a series of logical criteria. Okay, we're moving in the right direction. But to add social factors, I totally reject on a pavement policy, a road repair policy. The only thing you should worry about is, is the road heavily used and is it in poor condition? And that's where you should direct the monies.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Mary Ann, I've been working on these doggone roads for years. And some of them, like Capital Street over here, and I always forget, the Caillou Coast Road, that is disaster. I've been here now almost 70 years, I've never known those streets to be fixed, and they were potholes. they were potholes. I went down his area, El Dorado. That's horrible. Just horrible. And I heard here we've worked on the streets and made all the lumps on the other sides. But left El Dorado, which has traveled, you know, all the time because it's the, whatever you call it, between Constitution and Alvin, and it's really horrible. Our Ryder, they haven't had it. In my street, Hawaii, we've got cracks all over the place. It hasn't been sealed. The money that we're spending on studying, that's great to study, but take that money and fill these potholes. Ryder, now three different times, they have fixed the hole on Del Monte and Ryder. It's a big hole again. They didn't do it right. When you don't do the work right the first time, you have the problem. Ryder, I mean, their street over here, not Ryder, but Riker, that's horrible. You put these bumps in there. Why put them in until you fix the road correctly? Fix it first, then put in your safety things to slow down the traffic. Not the opposite, folks. That's doing work backwards. I think the city can do things correctly and not backwards. Spend our money doing something right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Montevia Community. I do like the idea of the social interaction in it, but honestly, we just need to fix roads. I mean, it doesn't matter where they're at. On the East Side, I mean, I take Marcus Street. Mark Street's horrible. You go down Constitution, it's horrible. You go down Freedom Parkway, it's getting bad because of all the heavy traffic. I mean, you go down East Baran, East Baran used to be beautiful. Now it's a one-lainer. It's a madhouse. And the road's horrible. I mean, you can go to even down on South Salinas. Some of the roads are very bad. Let's just, let's just fix everything. We don't need to make all these studies about who needs this and that. We know what roads need. We all travel these roads. We know what roads need to be done. I mean, look at Sandburn. Look at Abbott Street. My God, they're ugly. Those are the roads that people come and visit and come and spend vacations down. I mean, they finally, thank God, they finally did Blanco. But it's just as bad now already because of all the heavily traveled buses and the farm trucks and all that. It's happened in Montevia, too. Same thing. Off Scornberg going into Freedom Parkway, that road's getting chewed up by all the agriculture stuff. And it's, it's not just through social, let's look at everybody as people. Like, it doesn't matter where you live. Take care of everybody. You don't need to study to do that. You need to just get in your car and drive and say, oh, my God, hey, this is the road we need to fix. It's not rocket science, ladies and gentlemen. It's pretty basic, common sense. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys, for the studies and everything. I appreciate it. But it's, it's pretty simple. I mean, we don't need to spend millions of dollars trying to figure out where we should go and put the money. We know where it needs to go. Let's just do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, we have Dwight. You have two minutes. Welcome.
You asked out one question or one comment. If you're going to plant trees, don't plant trees that you're going to have to cut down 30 years from now like you did on Adams Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And noted for the record. Thank you. All right, we'll come back to council for final comments and action. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you for the presentation, Adriana. You know, I like to believe that traditional, pragmatic ways of creating policies like this will only be complemented by new social factors. I think that having a policy in place that is set increases transparency and accountability to the public, to our partners, and to utility companies as well. So I'm happy to support this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yeah, listening to the people that we serve, somebody mentioned about East Market. You know, East Market is a brand-new street, and it doesn't look like it. I mean, we did a lot of work. PG&E put all the wiring underground. I mean, millions of dollars were spent. But you go down East Market, I mean, a lot of the palm trees are dead. Trees are not being maintained. I'm sorry, but, yeah, East Market is a brand-new street. It really is. But again, it doesn't look like it. But, but I think to all the comments, I think they were all great, whether we agree or not. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
And then hopefully we'll move on. And yet, to the issues, I think we shouldn't spend a whole lot of money on studies. I think we have a lot of studies on the shelf somewhere that we've done. We just need to bring them down and address the issues. Dust them off and address the issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Sornio, final comments.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Adriana, for incorporating this in the, in the study when it came to the pavement report. I think about Rossi Place, you know, when you start thinking about like Rossi out there in Chinatown, and you look at that street that needs to get done, and you're looking at all the other places in District 4. But for many, many years, that, that street, it hasn't been paved over. And, and I kind of feel like as we start to look at the different streets that are around, sometimes those can kind of get forgotten. You know, I think about Sun Street as well in District 4, Calle Sebu. And, and when I start thinking about those streets, I feel like they've kind of just been left behind. So I look forward to this because that's truly, you know, another street I was thinking about, and it just came to my mind, Ragsdale is a street also that, that again, yeah, we're doing improvements around there on some of the bigger streets. But when you start to kind of focus on these changes that we will be implementing, if it passes today, that maybe those streets can now get some attention because, again, for many, many years in District 4, these are some streets that look like they weren't really, nothing was happening with them. So I look forward to supporting this, and thank you so much for your work on it. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Sandoval, final comments.
It's really unfortunate we've let our roads get this bad for so many years. And so this council is tasked, in my opinion, with fixing the mistakes of many previous councils when it comes to infrastructure across our city. I understand that some people are not in favor of the social factors, and we wouldn't be in this mess if for many years there was equitable distribution of resources across our city. It's the fact that there's areas of our city that have been neglected for a lot of years. Now, as a representative for District 5, I'll tell you that we do have the worst pavement, you know, according to the index. One of my, my recommendations, and I'm going to offer a substitute motion because I didn't see this as a factor in, in the, in the policy, is that, you know, that the roads that are most traveled by most people will affect the most people. So, so I'm going to make a substitute motion that we accept the findings of the 2023 Pavement Management Program update and approve a resolution approving the pavement management and street selection policy with the following modification to the policy, that the funding provided for such improvements should be directed towards the streets and roads that are in the poorest condition and that are most heavily traveled.
Okay, seeing no second to the motion, we will, the original motion stays. We'll go on for, are you, have your?
I just want to clarify that I wasn't removing any social factors or anything else. It was just that we, I just want to clarify my motion that, that we do also prioritize the ones that are used by most of our residents, not taking away any of the other factors. But I guess I did not have the support.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. We'll go on to Councilmember Rocha for final comments.
You know, I think that the reason, I can only speak for myself, why I didn't support the substitute motion is because we have data that is being shown to us in this staff report. And I'm a little bit hesitant about what the addition of that would mean to the overall process. But I wanted to ask our city engineer, do you think it would be within the direction that we're trying to go in, supporting-wise, to add most heavily traveled when it comes to identifying the streets within a specific district?
So most heavily traveled is already incorporated into the major roadways, which don't have the social factors. So the major roadways, these are our collectors and arterials. So our East Market, our Constitution, all of these roadways are part of the, the major roadways category, which are not broken up by districts. They serve everybody, so they're treated the same.
But not the residential. I'm just saying, when it comes to fixing.
So, so the challenge would come with regards to residential, you're saying, the smaller streets within the residential neighborhoods that are traveled more. The challenge there would be that we don't have the ADTs on a lot of these roadways, so we would have to start studying those as well.
It's difficult, and the reason being is because, you know, we have streets like Adams and certain very big, heavily trafficked that are in horrible condition. And although I recognize that we did fix Pueblo, like I said, there's, there's one street over Osage with, you know, much more traffic. And that's why I wanted to incorporate that because if we do fix some roads that, I understand they need work, but if the majority of our residents are not using them to travel, I see that there's a disconnect. So that's, that was the reason for my recommendation.
What do you think about that part?
It would just take more time.
Okay.
More field work, more time, because when we're talking residential streets, it's obviously a lot more than just the major streets.
Understood. Yeah, I'm going to support the original motion that is before us, and I think that we could reevaluate moving forward. But I think as we're trying to just chart a path on how to proceed, this makes sense, and we've spent a lot of time on it. Went back to the Finance Committee, and we provided additional direction there. So I want to thank you for all of your hard work on this. And I want to thank my colleagues in the city council for their support in moving in this direction. Policies like these have real impacts on our communities, especially in areas that have not seen this level of investment before. And this is not the first time this council's taken action to move in that direction. In 2021, we approved the American Rescue Plan allocation, and 12 million of that was set aside with some kind of a social factor, which was that we prioritized 93905 and 93906 zip codes because they were the most heavily impacted by the impacts of COVID-19. What that meant for my district when it came to allocation of sidewalk money and road money was Emerald Drive had their sidewalks repaired, which was a $500,000 repair in a community that probably would have never seen that level of investment before. And that's because you included social factors. And so this provides disadvantaged communities an opportunity to finally be seen by their government and to see that level of investment. And that's critical. And we're constantly hearing that from our constituents. And what I appreciate about this policy is it's using data to inform that work, not just council members identifying streets on their own based on their own personal knowledge, but rather using empirical data to support that direction so no one can feel that they're being, not chosen based on merit or anything like that. So we as a city have identified equity as a priority within our strategic plan. And I think that incorporating that in real work that we do is critical towards actually owning up to this value of ours, which is equity in our policymaking. And so I'm very excited to support this, and I thank my colleagues for, for their support in this as well, and happy to support the item.
Councilmember McShane, final comments.
Yeah, I'll jump on and just say thank you, Adriana. I know there's a lot of work in this. To members of the public, my colleagues, I bet you there's a lot of people out there that don't realize she's down three or four engineers that should be, should have stamps and, you know, be out there as civil engineers. She's working on a shoestring team, and to study and overcomplicate this is just a waste of time. Yeah, I think for anybody out there that thinks we're going to see more paving thanks to this policy is sadly mistaken. Our amount of money that we dedicate to paving in the city is itty-bitty. We are never going to see Phase 2 in any of our lifetimes. Hundreds of millions of dollars required for paving. And to Peter's points, we are overcomplicating this whole issue. And I think I would, I'm, yeah, I'm going to reject the motion completely. I think it's unnecessary and convoluted. I also think it could open up legal concerns. I mean, again, to our city attorney's point, you know, you can sue for anything, I guess, you know, and some of us may have practiced that. I just would say, when it comes down to it, this is, this is just unnecessary. And I think of how I would sum it up for, you know, how I'm going to walk out of here and take it. Two districts, same street conditions, same age, same set of factors. One district faces fewer trees, higher poverty rate, and is socially disadvantaged. That district's going to see the funding. You know, and I, this, this caught me off guard. Constituents reached out to me. What about, a whole host of other things. And I think there's, there's just, yeah, this is not the right direction. I think it complicates things. And in the end, quite frankly, I think District 3 is going to be gutted. And it may have even been brought up in the Finance Committee. I don't know. Somebody sent that to me, and I'll check it out. So, thanks.
Just for my final comments, I'm wondering if you can bring up the slide that shows the map of the city and a series of colors based on very good versus good versus average versus poor. And I'll give you a quick second to get to that. So when we talk about data for the city and data for how we determine how those streets are prioritized, this is really it. I mean, if you look at the city, this is the third-party, no, no general feeling about different areas of the city as a whole, but just the straight-up determination of the pavement conditions of our city. So there are areas that are in really good condition, and there are areas that are in very poor condition. And I genuinely believe that that's how we should be prioritizing our repairs. The reds go first, the oranges go second, the yellows go third, and the very goods are prioritized last because they are very good. I certainly support equity. I certainly support the equitability of things in our city, and I think this council does a very good job of that. I don't think equity should be applied to streets. I think the street's condition itself determines whether or not the priority should be made on, on repair. I've made my points. I won't be supportive of the motion for those reasons.
Point of information, I'm sorry, but.
Call for the vote, please.
No, we're not going to call for the vote. I'm going to say a point of information. 80% of the PCI score is factored in based on the road condition. I'm not out of order.
Councilmember?
I'm not out of order.
I've called for the vote.
Mayor, I make a motion that you allow questions for clarification. Can I get a second?
I will second that.
He's giving, he's not making questions, Councilmember. He wants a point of clarification.
Well, there is a motion to allow a member of this council to continue to speak. I'm going to second that motion. I'd like to be able to share my comments.
Go ahead. So, listen, council, I'm just going to ask that we maintain a level of professionalism. I called for the vote. Councilmember Rocha's asked for a moment of clarification on his point. I will grant that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then we will call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I'm only bringing that up because there was a comment made that District 3 was going to be gutted, and that is simply not the case. 80% of the district's score will be taken into consideration by pavement condition. Only 20% of that PCI score will be social factors. And so I agree with the comments that were made that we should look at the conditions of the road, and that is by and large the determining factor that will go into that decision-making process. Thank you.
Call for the vote, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Sornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. We'll go on to City Council Consent Agenda. There are 16 items on consent. Would anyone like to pull an item for separate vote or discussion? I'll start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
24-235.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera?
235 and 257.
Okay. Councilmember Osornio?
235, please.
Councilmember Sandoval?
235.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
Yes, 154 and 156.
Councilmember McShane?
257.
I may reserve for comment on 221. And I'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any items on consent? All right, seeing none, I'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on items on consent? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, we'll go back, and I'll seek a motion to approve remaining items.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval on ID 277, 269, 211, 230, 251, 252, 253, 256, 258, 262, and 278. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we will go to the first item, ID 154, the Professional Services Agreement with M&amp;S Engineers. Councilmember Rocha, you pulled this item.
Yes. I'm not sure whether or not the appropriate time would be to ask it in this question, this question, this item, or the other item, because the other item speaks to a budget of how the Bronda Road first-phase project will be funded, but the item is only the credits purchase. So I'm not sure where I would ask that question. I guess what I'll say is, if I could ask it in this one, because considering it's the Professional Services Agreement for the Construction Management Services Bronda Road, although it is not necessar, although that, that budget spreadsheet isn't reflected in this one, but I feel like it would have made sense to bring it up in the second one, if that's okay with you, mayor.
I presume so. You're asking to ask the question for 154 for the purpose of getting an answer from 156?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. That's fine.
There is essentially, as I understand, $15 million that we have for the first phase of Bronda. We need 19 million. Do you know, like, how that impacts this first-phase project?
No, we actually have 19 million.
Oh, understood.
And we're anticipating it's going to cost 15 million.
Oh, misunderstood the report. No, no further questions. I'll move the item for approval. Thank you so much.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember McShane. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 156. Councilmember Rocha?
No questions. I'll move the item for approval.
Okay, councilmember, uh, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. ID 221, I just wanted to make a comment. It was interesting for me to go through the list of surplus vehicles, and interestingly, one of the comments made was under Community Development that had three RV trailers that were donated by the state of California during COVID, so only three years old, essentially, to house home, four, three and a half, to house homeless people. They are currently vacant, and the interiors are damaged beyond reasonable repair. I sent an email to both David Jacobs and Lisa Britton. Lisa Britton got back to me. I thought it was important to just make the acknowledgement that the RVs are not designed for day-to-day living, and essentially, we had multiple families living in there for a period of three-plus years. And so as a result, it's just normal wear and tear. There was nothing significantly damaged outside of normal wear and tear. So with that, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Craig, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Call for the vote.
Councilmember, Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yep.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to City Council Consent Agenda. There are 16 items on consent. Would anyone like to pull an item for separate vote or discussion? I'll start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
24-235.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera?
235 and 257.
Okay. Councilmember Osornio?
235, please.
Councilmember Sandoval?
235.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
Yes, 154 and 156.
Councilmember McShane?
257.
I may reserve for comment on 221. And I'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any items on consent? All right, seeing none, I'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on items on consent? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, we'll go back, and I'll seek a motion to approve remaining items.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval on ID 277, 269, 211, 230, 251, 252, 253, 256, 258, 262, and 278. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Mc, oh, excuse me. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item. Memorandum of Understanding with Public Safety Cadets.
Yes, actually, I, I just want to commend this program. I think Chief Murray's credit, this is, uh, this is going to be great, and I think challenging our young people to be part of community service. You know, just the leadership that you do have within the Police Department, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McShane?
Yeah, I just would ask, Chief, maybe you can elaborate on this. You know, thinking about our future and the fact that we're down men and women, maybe a word or two. This has got to inspire you. You remember, once upon a time, you may have been a young cadet.
You know, I wish I'd have had this specific opportunity as a cadet. We've had an Explorer Program at the Salinas Police Department since the 1960s. And just being frank, it's ebbed and flowed in terms of its success. This cadet program provides a new focus, and we've already started implementing some changes. As you may have seen, it's been very exciting. We currently have 10 cadets. An additional five showed up at our last meeting, along with parents, and there was, there was a very excited vibe there. We're professionalizing it, and this MOU will provide some standard operating procedures. The cadets provide us for competitions, mentorship opportunities, scholarships.
Awesome.
Just a whole host of things. And you may have seen our cadets out at some recent events.
Yep.
You can feel the energy. They're very excited. And this creates a pathway to public safety careers for local kids, and that's what we're looking for. We want those local kids to look at our Police Department, our career paths, both sworn and professional, and stay right here in Salinas.
Yeah, thanks for your leadership. Happy to move the item. Thanks.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember McShane, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll go on to Councilmember Reports, Appointments, and Future Agenda Items. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I wanted to invite the community to two events coming up this Thursday. The Salinas Community Safety Communication Grant recipient, Hijo del Sol, has invited the community to a, a new exhibit, A Toda Madre, on 443 East Alisal Street, Suite C. And then wanting to invite the public, because on Friday, May 10th, the Salinas Community Science Workshop is hosting their last Science Night of the school year. The city's been quite supportive of this organization in the past, and I've attended a few of their Science Nights, always a great time to be had. Wanting to remind the public that open gym hours are happening at the Salinas Rec Center. And on that subject, wanting to remind folks that they have until the 17th to sign up for the Summer Hoops League. And that will be it for me.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, tomorrow morning, I'll be at the Firehouse Recreation Center, celebrating Mother's Day with my, with my crew out there. Awesome events. If some of my colleagues are free, we're, I think we're going to have some tacos. And Mr. P, I would love to see if you can make it for cameo appearance. It, it'll be great. It'll be tomorrow. I, I just wanted to say, welcome to Ms. Jamie Platts. She just stepped out, but welcome to Salinas. We just had a lowrider cruise down East Alisal. Marvelous. It was great. It's great when a community gets together. Cinco de Mayo Cluster Park on Sunday, as the mayor would said, it was a hoot. It was great. I don't know how you would say hoot in Spanish, really, hot, but it was a hoot. You know, it's awesome when the community comes together and they just do good things. You know, that is great. Let's just support them. Montevilla Meeting, I want to thank, maybe a candidate for City Council one day, Mr. Jose Guerra. He's putting a meeting together for Monday, May 20th, in Montevilla. That one's going to be, I need protection, but, but it's going to be a great meeting. Chief Murray is going to join me. The city manager will be there. Mr. Koenig with the Alisal School District will be there. So it'll be fun. So colleagues, I know you get complaints from Montevilla. Allow me to take care of business. It's, it's, what I like about it, they're very involved in their community. Mr. Jorge Rojas will also be there, talking about his issues with them. Congratulations, Chief Murray. Acosta Plaza, my God, awesome. You know, I'm sure the, the families out there appreciated a whole year of investigation. You're doing a great job, Mr. Chief Murray. I want to compliment you. I mean, I hear us. You know, like you said, hey, next time I see an officer, I'm going to say hi, because I kind of get weird too with that. I don't want, I don't want them throwing a finger at me or something like that, but it'll be all right. So kudos to you, sir. You did a great job there. Families appreciated at Acosta Plaza. Congratulations to Chief Klemic as well. The cadet program, got lots of cadets, promotions. Things are going good. So I just wanted to say thank you, and then come Monday, I'll be at the MST, or any Salinas Transit Board meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to the Monterey County Behavioral Health. They just did the ribbon cutting, and I know the mayor was there as well. It's, it's, it's located on Circle and Sanborn. And one of the questions that was asked was, how important is it, that the center is located, where it's located? And I said, it's, it's located where services are needed, and it's, and it's within walking distance from a lot of folks that live out in the Alisal. And it's just a huge multimillion-dollar investment, just like we're going to see with the Hebron Center, just like we're seeing with Caesar Chavez Park. And I just, it's, it's really great to see the investments that's happening in these communities. So congratulations to the Monterey County for the ribbon cutting. I also wanted to, there's a lot of, there's a lot of events happening in May. May, May's a, May's a great month to, to get out there. We're having great weather. If folks are available on May 18th, you can go over to the Midnighters Party in the Plaza out in Casterville. That's going to be May 18th, Saturday. They're going to have a great event out there. They have lots of members that are here from Salinas, so if you guys are available, May 18th. Also, on May 18th as well, in, in the night, there's going to be a dinner and, a dinner event for Jacob's Heart, which helps out with pediatric cancer. That's going to be over at the Taylor Building. If folks are able to make it there, it's a really great organization to support. So just wanted to kind of invite folks if, if they get a chance to go out there. Also, congratulations to the Monterey County Rape Crisis Center for their, their fundraiser, their dinner and fundraiser that was this past Saturday. I, I have the privilege to be married to my wife, which does awesome work there as, as a therapist. And so it's just a really great organization that we have here in the city, and happy to be able to support that, that event. Also, wanted to, to say thank you for all of the support. City Manager, Director Lundquist, for the support that we were given with the, the Dia del Niño event. The Tradição Por Siempre was, was, when we were speaking, we were hoping to just get a couple hundred people there at the park, and there was a couple thousand. So it was a great event for the kids, a lot of fun, but I've just, every single time that I have an opportunity, Vicky Sergeant, wow, she, great customer service, very attentive, very helpful. And, and I just thank Director Lundquist for, for having somebody there. I can only imagine all of the other events that, that go through this permitting process. They have the opportunity to work with her. So that, that's great. So just wanted to thank all of the volunteers and every, all the organizers that were involved in this year's event. And that's going to be it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
All right. First, I'd like to thank Mitch Huerta for his long service to Measure E, and congratulate him on being appointed to the Salinas Union High School District Board. I know as a former educator, it was one of his goals, so congratulations to him. May 18th, it's a little early, but start preparing. District Five will have a neighborhood cleanup. I appreciate the staff for coordinating that, and that will be held at Northridge Mall. So get your trash ready and bring it on down to the mall. Thank you to Chief Murray for going above and beyond with the family that you assisted and your department assisted. You know, thank you to Chris Barrera as well. I had a great meeting with Steve, Greg, and Audrey from the Salinas City Center about some of their concerns, and we got some, we had a good dialogue, and they raised concerns about our parking structure and the cameras and some of the much-needed work for that parking garage. And actually, Mr. Hammer actually raised an interesting point. He said we possibly could be saving money if we gave away free parking at the garage because of the high cost of running that. So I thought that was pretty interesting. We had a great rodeo subcommittee meeting. One of the things Mayor Craig brought was an idea to have like a contract subcommittee, so we could look at the agreements we have citywide, instead of addressing them one by one. So I support that idea. I like it. And finally, I'd like to thank Councilmember McShane. You know, one of, one of the things I think we both geeked out on, and I don't geek out a lot of stuff, but was our rules and decorum. And so-
All right. First, I'd like to thank Mitch Huerta for his long service to Measure E, and congratulate him on being appointed to the Salinas Union High School District Board. I know as a former educator, it was one of his goals, so congratulations to him. May 18th, it's a little early, but start preparing. District Five will have a neighborhood cleanup. I appreciate the staff for coordinating that, and that will be held at Northridge Mall. So get your trash ready and bring it on down to the mall. Thank you to Chief Murray for going above and beyond with the family that you assisted and your department assisted. You know, thank you to Chris Barrera as well. I had a great meeting with Steve, Greg, and Audrey from the Salinas City Center about some of their concerns, and we got some, we had a good dialogue, and they raised concerns about our parking structure and the cameras and some of the much-needed work for that parking garage. And actually, Mr. Hammer actually raised an interesting point. He said we possibly could be saving money if we gave away free parking at the garage because of the high cost of running that. So I thought that was pretty interesting. We had a great rodeo subcommittee meeting. One of the things Mayor Craig brought was an idea to have like a contract subcommittee so we could look at the agreements we have citywide, instead of addressing them one by one. So I support that idea, I like it. And finally, I'd like to thank Councilmember McShane. You know, one of the things I think we both geeked out on, and I don't geek out a lot of stuff, but was our rules and decorum. And so something we were able to work collaboratively on was the way we agendize items here in City Council. And so, pretty soon, we're going to be bringing forward a new policy, similar to the county's referral process to agendize items and help keep our city moving forward. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I attended a Housing and Land Use Committee meeting, and I thank my colleagues for their participation in that committee. I had a lot of discussions about water last week. I had a Monterey One Water Board of Directors meeting on Monday, followed by a Monterey One Water Strategic Planning Session the next day. So really excited for the new direction that board's taking. We all feel that there's a greater level of unity and a real honest and truthful commitment to working together. And so I'm excited to be able to provide that as a city's representative to that board. I had a Salinas Valley Recycles Executive Committee meeting. We have a new Vice President for the organization, Liz Silva, from the city of Gonzales, who's serving in that capacity. And I'd like to share the appointment of Anthony McFarland to the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. Anthony currently works as a Director of Finance and Information Technology at the Alliance on Aging, and previously has had several roles in public sector financing, such as the Administrative Services Director for the city of Scotts Valley, the Finance Manager for the city of Saratoga, and the Finance Director for the city of Pacific Grove. So I look forward to having his insight on that committee. And that's all I have to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McShane?
Yeah, just in case anybody wasn't paying attention, this is my last council meeting. And I just want to say thanks to the colleagues. Thank you for the compliments and the kind words. It's been great, it's been an honor. As Councilmember Barrera often would say, this seat belongs to District Three. It doesn't belong to me, just as all these seats are elected. And the public's watching, often, more often than we realize. And so did that, too. And I just also want to thank the city staff. You know, 500-plus at times, depending on census, we're down right now. But the city's a great place to work, it's a great place to be. It's a great community. I was mentioning earlier at the reception that was held, you know, too often, we get caught in social media or pay attention to kind of the dark side of society, you know? Everything's falling apart, you know, we don't have what we want. The Amazon order didn't come, the pizza's cold, the kids not going to sleep. The reality of it is, we are beyond blessed, we really are. And to fight over some of the details and get caught up in the weeds, you know, if I knew this life would be so rich, I would stress less and worry less. And I think some of us would agree with that. We've got it great here in Salinas. Our county government, our state government, and our federal government. I've been lucky enough to travel nearly to 100 cities. And when I would travel, excuse me, countries. And when I'd travel, I'd bring coasters or coffee mugs from Salinas, and I'd spend time with elected officials, chambers of commerce, find out what made their community tick. And I'd always come back and say, we have it so well, even with the potholes, even with the problems. And that's important. And I think to everybody here, as I was sharing earlier when there was a bit of a reception, you know, there's a great passage in the Bible called the Parable of the Talents. And, you know, here's this wise, wealthy man that entrusts some of his riches with various folks. And a couple of them go out and they do great things. And then there's the one that buried the riches and said, well, hey, I preserved it. Well, the moral of that story is, he didn't do anything. And that's to each and every one of us. For as much as we get grumpy with whatever's affecting us as policymakers or anybody else watching, those of us with families or at work, you know, we can see the positives, we can contribute, we can be productive, and that's what we're given. That's our, that's our opportunity. So, you know, I hope that everybody that's watching today didn't focus on what we may have disagreed upon, what we may have gotten at each other over. It's a whole heck of a lot easier to tear people down than to build other people up. And, you know, the secret of that is, if that's all you focus on, the differences and tearing people down, investigating, finding out what's wrong, punching them harder, well, you know, you may make a point, it may make the newspaper even. But at what cost? You know, maybe your life will be a little shorter. So I just would say to anybody watching and to my colleagues, let's continue to do good things for Salinas, we can. We're up here to do that, we have that opportunity. And whether I'm a council member, a dad, a friend, or just a citizen at large, I'm here to continue to support. So it's been great serving on the City Council. Friday's my last day, 5:00 PM, I think I clock out and I'm done. And I trust that this council will select or appoint, I think it is, the right person to do the job, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, when I was a council member, I watched former Councilmember Jill Lutz give a moment of her time in Councilmember Reports to just acknowledge outgoing council members for their service. And I thought it was a really great point to sort of summarize the 14 years that Councilmember McShane has given. So I'm going to yield my mayor's update just to acknowledge some of the things he's done in the last 14 years. He has served on the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments for 14 years, and three years as Chair and serving on the Executive Committee. The Central Coast Community Energy for seven years as a founding member, serving three years as Vice Chair and three years as Chairman. Monterey Bay Area Resources District for 12 years and serving three terms as Chair. The California Vanpool Authority, serving six years and three years as Chair. The city's Fireworks Subcommittee, Old Town Salinas Association, State and Federal Legislative Committee, City Charter and Decorum Committee, and the City and County MOU, Memorandum of Understanding Subcommittee. And while he was on council, he and the council supported and adopted the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Master Plan, the Public Art Master Plan, the Downtown Vibrancy Plan, the Economic Development Element for the General Plan, the Alisal Vibrancy Plan, the Salinas Fire Master Plan, the construction of Al Gabalan Library in the Salinas Police Services Building, the redevelopment of downtown Salinas, numerous traffic calming projects, safe routes to school, and the Share Center. It was also instrumental in the creation of the Salinas Connect app and bringing it to the city, the legislation for the Salinas Arts Ordinance, the Salinas Public Arts Commission, and Public Arts Fund, the creation of the Neighborhood Services Division of the city, the Salinas Urban Canopy Program, and the establishment of a sister city with Soke, Turkey. I will also just acknowledge, like, the stuff that's not on his proclamation also includes Salinas United, which was the precursor to Amor Salinas. It was a request and a desire to engage the community in volunteerism. And he opened up the firehouses so people had open house access, and Snappy the Turtle, I think, made an appearance. And just a really remarkable day where all areas of the city were open to the public, and a real push for volunteerism from our residents. He's the founder, and it came up with the grand idea, the Salinas Valley Food and Wine. He told me years ago, like, I'm going to make it like Pebble, and I thought he was off his rocker. But remarkably, his ideas have been turned into a reality in our community, and I think our residents have benefited from that. He was, the idea came for Holiday Home Lighting Tour, where we had 200 residents at one point going around all areas of the city, and there was a fierce competition for holiday lights and managed to get a corporate sponsor for it and everything. I've always said that, you know, for Steve, if you need 1,500 people in downtown on a Saturday, like, three days from now, Steve McShane can do that. The city, and the city as an institution, and the city and its residents has seen Steve McShane get married and have children and have a real desire for economic development and a robust public safety, robust public safety departments. He's focused on housing and homelessness. And I just want to say thank you, because it takes a lot for anyone to give 14 years of service to anything, to anything. And I just want to say, your enthusiasm and your dedication and your heart that you gave to Salinas should be commended. So thank you. All right, one more, one more closed session. We have pending litigation on Section, California Government Code, Section 54956.9A. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom? Maybe, not sure. There we go. All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.